Our next item of business, we've asked someone from Community Investment Strategies to come to meet with us this evening. As we all know, unlike tonight, the last several meetings since July, we've had several dozen residents coming to our meetings with their concerns in terms of what's going on over at Oakwood Plaza. So we have here this evening, I believe, Ms. Folio, who is here to, I guess, provide us an update. But Ms. Folio?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay. But before you make your presentation, just want to let you know, just a summary, I guess, of some of the issues, concerns that there have been. I don't know if you have come prepared to address them or not, but some of the things, and I've written some things down, one of the things has been the lack of communication with the residents. I understand, though, that recently you have started to have some meetings with the residents by building. I understand. Only feedback I've gotten from that, and I'd like to share, is that if you could find a closer location, might make it easier for more participation by the residents. Okay? We've gone from that, from dirty hallways and staircases and that, you know, piles of garbage. And just so you'll know, several of us have been out there to Oakwood, including myself. I was just there this past Sunday, you know, going and talking with residents and trying to get a feel and a better grasp on what's going on out there in terms of demolition and the buildings and what have you. So the dirty hallways, the staircases, the piles of garbage throughout the, you know, the buildings. We see some painting was done in staircases, but unfortunately it seems like residents aren't too helpful in that respect. I saw myself, they did paint the hallway, and then people just took and walked right through the paint, and walked right through the hallways. They painted the staircase, I'm sorry. They walked right up the staircase, and you see paint spread all over the hallways now. But that's just another one. Children playing on the rooftops, the poor lighting in and outside of the building, the parking lots. The demolition has been a big concern. They're saying the way that it's been handled at the beginning particularly, it wasn't even being holed down to keep some of the debris from going out. There are a number of health concerns that go with that, of course. Pest problems, it seems that, they're saying, has increased, especially since the first building has been knocked down already. A lot of concern with the work orders and how they're handled, and even when they are handled, you know, some of the quality of the repairs that are done, as well if they are taken too long, never following up, and the quality. And even I had some tenants say to me, even when they do make complaints, if you complain too much, it seems to be a problem mysteriously, those that have vehicles, their tires are slashed, their cars, vehicles get, you know, scratched and things of that nature. So there's some concern in terms of the employees that you have working there, you know, and, you know, what kind of experience they have, if background checks are being done, things of that nature. So they have a lot of concerns with that. Safety and security, the doors are wide open, there isn't anybody that can come in and out, you know, as they wish, and just the general conditions were poor, leaks all over on some apartments, black mold in the ceilings and things of that nature. So the community rooms being shut down, they can't do anything, have any meetings, have any services, programs for the children. So just a list of some of the complaints we've gotten here. I'm surprised there's nobody here tonight, to be honest with you.
I retreat.
I really am, because the last few meetings have been, the rooms have been full, the chambers have been full. So with that said, I turn it over to you and look forward to whatever information you have to share with us this evening.
So I could either begin by addressing the concerns that you just laid out, if that's would be your preference, I could give you an update and then go back and address whichever of you want to refer.
Whichever way, fine, it's fine. Addressing the concerns might be the best.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, starting there is probably the best since you, and I have watched the YouTube sessions to understand what kind of pressure you all have had to bear. And I would say, you know, that, you know, this is not an easy project for anybody, and I think the residents, you know, their complaints are very valid. All I can kind of walk you through is how I'm trying to address the situation. So I think many of you have met me before, but if I haven't, Chris Folio, I am the president of CIS and the owner of Oakwood, and obviously the buck stops with me. So the issue here is, in all honesty, when we looked at Oakwood, we looked at an opportunity to do what happened in the port. And I think those of you who look at our properties in the port can see a dramatic difference between what we can accomplish as a construction company, a developer, and a management company, and what you see as our shortcomings, as you see it, in Oakwood. Because it was never our intention, and if you look at all the portfolio that I own throughout New Jersey, which is close to 3,000 units, nothing looks or operates like Oakwood. And it wasn't our intent to ever have Oakwood standing. So we came to Oakwood with a commitment from the state of New Jersey for $20 million to replicate what had happened in the port. And as, you know, Councilman Grover kind of had to go through that process, we knew it would take some time, but we did believe that we would be able to knock all the buildings down and really convert that into a townhouse kind of complex, lower density, lower scale. So to be very honest with the council, when you buy a piece of property, you do due diligence in terms of what's that building like if you're going to have to own it and manage it. And for us, we never intended to keep it up as long as it's up right now. So a lot of, we knew the systems were failing because it was justifiable to knock down because of the systems were failing. Only to find, just about six months into ownership, that the commitment that had been made by the then-Governor Corzine was then not followed through by the Governor Christie because of budgetary problems. So we received $4 million of the $20 million, the first $4 million came in to acquire the property, but the other $16 million never came. So just to kind of put it into context, that $16 million, which should have been a grant and not an obligation of the property, became another debt on top of the property. So we have a first mortgage with the state of New Jersey through the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency, and then we have a second mortgage, which is a UCIA mortgage for 60, well, it's about $18 million now, because the county was faced with defaulting on the bonds once Christie did not fund the second $4 million tranche of funding. And so the county had to quickly go out and do 30-year bonds at the end of the year, very expensive proposition. And so we have two pots of debt on the property. What happens is that, you know, and I know you hear a variety of things, so I wanted to walk you through the process. When HUD, when HUD pays the Section 8 rents, they don't pay them to CIS. They pay those rents to the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency, which is the first mortgageer on the property. This month alone, after the agency pays their percentage of mortgage, which is $230,000 a month, and then they ask for taxes and insurance and R&amp;R, which is repair and replacement, the amount that came to CIS to operate the entire property for that month was $10,000. So CIS has actually been fronting the cost of trying to maintain the property as we are trying to redevelop. To date, I've put in $750,000 of CIS's money to try and operate the property until we can get to redevelopment. Even though Parker Road, and I met with residents this week, and I said, can you believe that over the last year we have spent $1 million in Parker Road? And I know a few of you have walked through, and you say, where could $1 million go? It's just a drop in the bucket. Part of the issues, and I know that there's a lot of residents that have collapsed ceilings, it's just not like the ceilings are falling. The problem is that there's plumbing above those ceilings. And so if the toilet is running, and it has been running for a series of years, it has completely destroyed the infrastructure above that ceiling. So one day the ceiling is up, and the next day the ceiling could fall. So some of the communications, and I believe, and Councilman Grover has also expressed his concern for the lack of communication, and I believe Councilman Saw at the meetings that he attended this week, that there's a bit of a mea culpa on my part. Because you need to understand that if anybody watched me through the HOPE 6 project, I had a very, very close relationship with the residents, and I still have a very close relationship with the residents. But for me, I stood up when I first bought that property, and I was the first owner to go and actually talk to tenants, and I went and I said, I'm going to make it better, only to find that the rug was pulled out from under me. And to be honest with you, and this I've learned is a failure of mine, I didn't have the guts to stand up and tell people the rug was pulled out, and I have no better plan yet, but trust me. And I was waiting to have an ability to go before residents and say, okay, we didn't get Plan A, but look, I've done, I could get this. The only problem is this is only going to address 50% of the property, and I will explain where we will get to when I make my presentation. The rodent issue, just so that you know, 87 people in Oakwood refuse on the second request to allow us to come in to abate the issues, whether it's bed bugs or other rodent issues. If they don't help me, I can't get in front of that problem. And we are now taking 87 people to court, because if you try two times, you can bring people to court to let you into the units too. So we have to, we have the exterminator there on site, but people won't let them in to exterminate. So we have a long way to go to building trust between an owner, because, to be honest with you, the owners of the past really haven't done a good job in creating any kind of relationship, and I have to prove myself. And right now, I haven't had a really good track record because I really haven't been able to fix their problems. Not for not wanting, but just from a resource standpoint, how do we begin? Where do we begin? So in the meetings this week, I committed that we would meet every month. I will tell you that we had about a third of each building come to the meetings. I would like to have more. We will do a monthly newsletter, so that people that are working, that can't make the meeting, will at least be getting writing what's said at the meetings. And I realize that the lack of communication only added to the frustration, and that was a mistake on my part. In terms of the community center, I think this is a perfect example of where lack of communication creates a lot of ill will. Last winter, we had a very difficult time supplying heat and hot water to Building 350 and 380. And the way that those buildings are serviced by a loop system where all of the boilers are in the 200 building on Parker Road. When the prior owner had it, he received half a million dollars to upgrade the boilers, but they never upgraded the lines that went to any of the other buildings. So I know you've heard, probably, that they have, they have had water, hot water issues. So in order to make sure that we were prepared, as the demolition of 400 happened, I was afraid that the demolition could impair service of water to 380 and 350. So we brought in, at our expense, new temporary boiler system that I located in the community space, so I could service 350 and 380. At that point in time, I was not sure how many residents would actually still be occupying those buildings through the winter, and we had a very, you know, high concern that we would have the same situation we had the previous winter. In the meetings with the residents last week, I said, you know, my option was heat or hot water, heat and hot water or a community center. I said, I'm sure if I asked you, you would pick the heat and hot water. But it was the lack of them understanding what caused that decision to shut the community room that I think festered more of this ill will between owner and resident. So, you know, I sympathize, I stay up nights trying to figure out what we do in order to address the problem. The issue is that there's a very fragile support system in these Section Eights. And as I spoke to residents, right now those Section Eights are tied to very terrible buildings. But without the buildings, I can't ensure that anybody has the Section 8. So we really are in a very bad catch-22 in terms of, do you lose subsidy, or do you try to do something with these buildings, at least in the short term, so that I protect them having some level of subsidy? The plan that I'd like to walk through, I think I hit rodent, I had bad communication, security and lights. I'm happy at any point to give you what we're actually doing in terms of repairs. And as you notice, Councilman, you know, the replacement of lights is a constant battle that we face there. We now have approval, and I should, I should clarify this. I talked about HUD pays New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency and left us with a very small amount, and I mentioned an account reserved for repairs and replacement, which would be the fund you would go to to keep up your building. I have letters, and I shared them with Councilman Grover, where we've requested release of money to put locks on the doors, only to be denied by the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency, because they don't feel that there's enough money in the reserve account. So over the last three months, I have been fighting and petitioning, and I've actually gotten some sympathetic ears to listen, and the HMFA has given us about $500,000 to start to do repairs in Parker Road, which is a big amount. But in the last six months, there was an additional $600,000 spent, really on trying to stop the water infiltration from the outside, which is the roof, which is causing people a lot of the problems, which is causing some of the deterioration in the stairwells. In terms of the kids playing on the roof, as you know, fire code does not allow us to lock down the roof. There have, we are, we have been approved by the HMFA out of that same pot of funding to do magnet locks, which we have met with the fire department here, and the only time those locks would be released is if fire alarms were to go off in the building. So I do believe we will be able to lock down the roofs going forward, and I specifically continue to focus on Parker Road, because I think at the end of the meeting, you'll see that we have a pretty solid game plan for the buildings that face Irvington Avenue. From the demolition standpoint, we've had DEP out, we've had your own health inspectors, we've shown through our subcontractor that did the demolition, that all of the appropriate mechanisms were followed on the demolition, including appropriate removal of asbestos. We continue to try to minimize the situation with demolition. That site will be graded, it will be open at the end of the redevelopment, to just try to create a better space, hopefully the new tot lot and the things that I would talk about tonight. So if you're okay, okay. Maybe, so that I make sure everybody can see, do you mind if I just use maybe this chair here, and I'll do it like this? Okay. So obviously, the first, our first choice was to knock it down, and as I've explained, that's not really an option. So we basically went to Plan B. And the way to finance, and the way the port was financed besides the HOPE 6 dollars, was with tax credits, which is a competitive process at the state of New Jersey. You have to compete, it takes about nine months before they make an award. And what we decided to do was to look at the worst building structurally. And the worst building, believe it or not, if you think, you've seen the worst, the worst was really 400. And 400 had to come down because there was no way structurally we would ever have been able to rehab that. So we decided to demolish 400, and we decided that we should think about the site in a different way. So as you know, from down in the port, some of the ways that you can really change a community is by creating defensible spaces, where people have a front door and an address. And basically, I learned that from the residents, how did they want to live in that neighborhood? So we were able to claim the back of the site with townhouse development, which will activate the back. And as many of you who know and have been to Oakwood, this is basically a dark zone, very difficult to manage. All of a sudden, when families are living here and it's their front door, they become part of the resolution to the problem. They are policing that just by their activity alone. So we knew we had to do something back here. This will be 24 new townhouses. In the 350, this is 350, 380, and this was where 400 stood, this is Irvington Avenue, who orient everyone. 350 right now has about 30 families living in it. It is phase one of the redevelopment. We applied with two applications to the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency. Only 13 applications were approved out of over 50 applications. We received two for the same property. Now, that might not seem a lot to you, but I can tell you, there's a lot of people around the state that were not happy that we received two awards. Those two awards between this project and this will bring about $30 million in redevelopment to this site. So the first thing that happens, both 380 and 350 will be redeveloped in the same way. But to go back to what we talked about, creating spaces and opportunities to activate where a building has dark spots, dead zones, doesn't feel like it interacts with the street or the community, we decided that, could we penetrate at the ground floor and create doorways and create openings for people that would actually create a townhouse but inside the building? So what you see here are walkways to units, where someone would actually have a door, where you currently see just the job in the Oakwood building, they would have their own door with their own address, they'd walk in, they'd have their kitchen, their living room, their dining room, and then they would have an interior stair which takes advantage of the second floor as their bedroom, so they would get two-story living. And now I've taken the first and second floor of the building and said, any families that are serviced at that level don't need to use the elevator, because I'm sure you've heard about the disaster of the elevators. In the renovation, obviously we'll have new elevators, they'll be handicapped, accessible, and part of the problem I'm having with the maintenance of the elevators is their age. So if in any other building, and I own senior buildings, and I have Heritage Village in town that's an elevator building, it goes down, you could usually get a repair person and the part within a reasonable period of time, 48 hours. Here, they tell us, you know, you've got to wait a week for this part, or I don't, I can't find the guy that knows how to fix that piece. So we're dealing with an antiquated system that even when there's a want to repair, there's a delay in being able to respond, which looks like people don't care. So if I can pull families out from having to use that elevator, hopefully I'm reducing the wear and tear constantly on the system. Even though it's new, it's still a good idea. What will happen is that these walkways will happen all around the building, so creating activity even behind. So in that way, the circulation and the day-to-day activity hopefully will change the way they feel about, the resident feels about where they're coming home to, so it's safe and lit and bringing it down in scale. So it has an address on the street that makes people feel like they're part of the rest of that community, which you know is a beautiful neighborhood. So we're trying to, you know, take it down, even though it's a five-story building, try to have people feel like they're not always living in an elevator building. And hopefully, larger families would have the two-story living. We'd still have to service from the elevator to the third, fourth, and fifth floors, but at least we're able to take some of that man, what I consider massing out of it. Now, as I mentioned, Tuesday and Thursday night, Tuesday night by building, I met with 350 and residents of 380. Thursday night by building, I met with residents on the Parker Road, the 200 buildings. So obviously, the happiest people that came out of the meetings were the 30 families in 350, because in the next 60 days, 60 to 90 days, most of those residents will be relocated. Under the approval I have from HUD, I'm able to take residents that are currently in this building, relocate them off-site for only one year, but they will be covered by Section 8, which is a very key thing. And then I must move them within one year's time back into a renovated unit. But, so this would, there's about 30 families left, and we are currently seeking relocation resources, which include some of our other properties and some of the other local landlords in the city. 380 will, nobody will move from 380 until after the Christmas holidays, probably sometime in February, March. So it gives everybody now comfort that they're not going to get a 30-day notice right before Christmas, that they got to pack up and leave. But the next building that will be renovated will be 380, it will be done exactly the same as 350.
How many units are occupied in 380?
There's 42 units right now. In front of 380, there will be a new clubhouse, and this will be in addition to, the community room is currently in 380, that will be completely renovated and functional with a catering-style kitchen and the like. And then in addition, this building becomes the front door of Oakwood. It'll be our leasing office as well as a more intimate community space, which could offer, you know, after-school kind of tutoring, it'll have its own entrance, so that in the evenings, or if it's a girls' style troop or boys' style troop, we can give access to a smaller venue without having our staff always, you know, having to be there and such. So this will happen out front of 380. And this is, this is a clubhouse that we use throughout our properties.
How many families did you say were in 350?
350, 30 families.
30.
And how many people does it fit between the room here?
The big one?
The space that can be used here and...
This is probably, I would say, 15 to 20, and then anything larger than that, we'd have to use the larger community. So when, post-renovation, this would be the rendering, where you will see, these little nuances are over doorways that are entering into people's apartments. There's going to, you know, as much as possible, again, limit the number of shared entry, shared corridors. As you all know, if someone is at your front stoop, whether you own it or not, and they're doing something you don't like, you feel that you're empowered to say, you know, I don't like what you're doing, would you please move along? And most people will move along because it's your door. If you're in a hallway and you're doing something that someone doesn't like, and someone comes up to you and says, please move along, they say, you don't own the hallway. So the more that we can empower the resident and give spaces that they can control, the better from a secure standpoint we'll be able to respond. From a security standpoint, it's not, it's not about just policing, it's about giving people an ability to secure their own space. And so the new process will be, I'm sure some of you know from like office buildings, like FOBs, they're little great things that you have to kind of move along the entry. It'll be FOB entry, but a little bit different in that if you live on the fifth floor and you have a FOB, and you go into the elevator, and you press four and you FOB, it will not open on four, because you live on five. And so the idea is also control the internal access that people have and can give to people once they're inside the property. In the stairwells, if you live on three and you run up the stairwell to four and you flash your FOB, it's not going to let you onto the floor. Now, in an emergency, all FOBs go up, so there's access for firefighters all through the building. And it will only be as good as you have people complying, but it at least is an electronic way of controlling who has access to what. Now, we talked about this in the resident meeting, will some people be inconvenienced? Yes. If somebody comes to visit you, and they live on five, and they want to get out, they want to get out on four, what happens is you have to come out of your unit and you have to press the elevator so you could let the person down on four. But if something bad happens, and we just had a situation in Building 380, where we had vandals come through and pull out the entire electrical panel for the building. Now, yes, did it hurt me? It hurt me monetarily, but it hurt those residents a lot more than it hurt me, because they had no fire alarms and they had no lights until we could get that system back up and running. So the idea is, if something bad happens, most likely, now that you can control this access by four, it's somebody on that floor that allowed that. So hopefully, peer pressure will also play a part, in that if I'm inconvenienced, somebody that's living with me basically allowed this to happen. So I have to, and we've asked, that the residents become part of the solution. I can only be the tool to help them get the community that they want, but the spirit of one... of wanting has to come from them. And so I think my biggest challenge over the next several months is, yes, dealing with the physical, but more importantly, dealing with the spiritual level there, that number one, tenants deserve better than they're getting, and they have to hear that from me and from everybody that goes to that property, but also that they become part of the process. And I explained that in the port process, you know, I took a lot of life lessons out of that, and I take them wherever I go. And some of you knew one of the resident leaders, Ceeley Frazier, who became a very close friend of mine, and early in the process, I was talking about, you know, we needed a name for the port, let's call it Portside Commons, nobody was listening to me, said yeah, 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 and then I got very excited, said, you know, when we finish, we're gonna put this beautiful sign up, and it's gonna say, welcome to the port, it's gonna have gold letters, nautical theme, and Ceeley looked at me and said, we're going through all this and you're gonna put a sign? And I said to her, well, it's a sign. She said, well, you have a sign in front of your house? And I said, no. And she said, when we're finished this, we need to give people an address to call home, Seventh Front Street, Ten Pine Street. And I then understood that to me, it was a sign, but to her, it was something much different. Here, there will be elements like that sign, that I won't know, because I'm not gonna live there. And that was the pitch I tried to make in the resident meetings, that the resolution to a lot of their problems, they know how to fix, they have to teach me what that is, and we work together to try to figure out how I get the money or how we go about doing it. Most residents want a voucher. After the meeting, everybody came to my car and said, but can't you just get me out? You know, I really want, I really need a voucher. And I said, what I will do is every time we appeal to HUD, I will ask for vouchers. They can continue to say no, but I can continue to ask in the process, and that's what we intend to do. But I think that the council needs to understand that the vouchers do not solve really the underlying problem, because if the people receive vouchers and go, there's no income to continue paying the debt. So I will be back here with another profit. So I think that together, we're gonna try and figure out what to do with Parker Road, and I think that may mean a variety of things. Maybe it'll be some vouchers. I talked to the residents last week about, maybe we take one of the buildings on Parker Road and it becomes just a senior building, because the seniors have different needs in that community, and they don't like living with kids, and there's a lot of kids at Oakwood. So maybe we work and we see if there's a demand, take one building and we renovate it as senior. And then we look at the other two buildings and we work together to try to resolve it. I have not come with excuses for why the things are not addressed, it is something that I work on daily, but I'm doing the best that I could possibly do under the circumstances that we have. In response, Council President, to the comments about not having the right people on the job, it's a process. You know, we give people a chance, they fail, we move on. So as of two weeks ago, through local representation, I was introduced to a group that seems to have good credentials, we checked on their references, they have worked in other difficult communities that were challenged, and I think that they may be up for the task. I think one of the better things that I already see is that there's an immediate respect for people and what the place should look like. So that's why we started with the painting of stairwells. It was really clear that I wouldn't like to walk that stairwell, a resident must not feel safe or like that environment. So we thought, painting would make it feel fresher, it would at least show a sign that we were moving towards something that at least was clean. And in terms of supplies, as the people were power washing the stairwells to get ready for paint, the washer breaks, so the gentleman's there and he's looking at it and like, why did it go off? While he's power washing, someone took the electrical extension. So that's the basic environment that even the workers are dealing with, like to get the job done, to help the resident, sometimes the residents are not, and it probably wasn't even a resident, because most of our issues are not residents, but it's that, it's that simple, where you leave a mop bucket and you go to use a facility and you come back and the bucket isn't there. So we've had to rethink, how do you do this? And we've had residents at the meeting that said, well, maybe we have to be part of what the maintenance team is doing. And that, I thought, was a really great sign. I don't know how many people want to mop the floors, but even if they just protect the mop and the bucket, we've taken a major step forward in having that be a community process of keeping the place better as we go through a pretty difficult time. The state has canceled the next round of applications, we were gearing up to put in a new application to start to address at least maybe a senior building of Parker Road, they've put that off until next year and they have not given us a date. In the meantime, I've had some conversations with Bill Jones and his staff at the Housing Authority, just to brainstorm, to see if we joint venture or work with the Housing Authority, if that brings different resources, if that opens up a different avenue. If there are other ideas, I will go and I will see and I will talk to anybody that you think could be helpful. I think that at least with, even though coming down of four hundred has caused an ametag, and so I don't like the best word, is agita, for people in the process, I believe taking that building down is really gonna change how those buildings feel, because you'd be able to see, it opens it up, and it's gonna basically stay open. But what came out of the, it's in my pocket, I'm sorry, what came out of the community meeting was a point about people have to continue to stay in Parker Road as we even work together to come up with a resolution, and not just necessarily, because this was only from, what, Thursday night, and we're trying. So if you know Parker Road and in front of the two-hundred buildings, there is a setback and it's a grass area, and Councilman asked me to consider whether we could think about a tot lot, just as a temporary measure, so that the families on Parker, at least during the construction, will have some ability. So we're looking at whether we could accommodate a small temporary, it's not gonna be anything fancy, but at least it would be something during the construction. And I think, number one, there's enough space to do it, we would have to work with the planning staff to, you know, understand that it's just temporary, but at least we could get something in front. And I think that would be really good, because it would then begin to orient people towards Parker Road, as opposed to behind, where there is gonna be construction, and to be very honest with you, it's not gonna be pleasant for a lot of people, it's gonna be dirty, at least the good thing is demolition is much dirtier than construction. So I think it might have been nice to get the construction out of the way, because anything I do from now on will be a lot nicer than what happened in the demolition. So, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to bring the council up to speed, I'm happy to come on a periodic basis, whenever you want me to come to give an update. I wish I had a plan for the entire site, and that's what I told residents at Parker Road. All I could say was that, we mentioned, I mentioned earlier, Ceeley Frazier said she wanted to be the last person that went in to the units in the port, because she said they'll only get better and better. So I said, that's basically what happened, we learned from, in the early, what we made, what mistakes we made and how we could improve, and the end units were the best. So I said to Parker Road, I know you're waiting, but probably you're gonna get the best result at the end. So I'm happy to speak to you.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I'll be quick, because I was there when she met on Thursday, and I'm very pleased, I mentioned to you, I think, also, I'm very pleased with the meeting, and a few things that came out of the meeting that I was very impressed with was the lack of communication. And I mentioned to Chris, I said, I think this project is gonna start to move now, because the people there in that site are starting to get involved, and they got input, the same thing they had at Old St. Kelly, and that Councilwoman know that, and she's gonna start doing that, I think gonna see the community level work much better than it has in the past. The other thing, I guess, because you failed to mention, Chris, I'd like people to think a little bit more on security, you forgot to mention that, and I talked about security, and she's gonna, I want to talk about it, you come back and talk about that. I'm so happy that she participated in the playground, and I mentioned about the playground, because if you guys remember, we were sitting there, the kids were talking about playing dirty, remember that? And I said, well, maybe just do something, you know, temporary, and they understood that, and they were kind of happy with that. And last but not least, if you could just touch a little bit more on the vouchers, because there's a big rumor out there on the street, that everybody would get these vouchers and da-da-da-da, and it's all over the city, and it was not true. So I think, I know you mentioned this a little bit, and you can elaborate a little bit more on the vouchers, security, you mentioned about the playground, and I'm so happy, and now that he understands, the president understands, about the community room, I didn't know that myself till I had that, that they had what she did.
Nobody did.
Yeah, exactly, but it was lack of communication, Councilman, but that's what it takes, communication is the key. And I can see this thing moving forward now, and you see tonight, you don't have many people here, because she was, she sat down with each group, and she talked about, and I think she did a great job on Thursday, and I was, went there, intended to be for an hour, and I stayed there for three hours, but I was happy I stayed there, but anyway.
Okay, two things, vouchers, we didn't have any vouchers, none of our residents received vouchers to leave, the only way someone may have had the benefit of moving to a different Section Eight unit is because they were on the Housing Authority list and their name was, and they've been there for years, and so they were lucky enough that they were called by the Housing Authority. We had no vouchers given to us as part of the process. The second thing is security, we have decided to go with a private security process to augment the police headquarters.
That the group that we got with?
Yes. We have been waiting for them to just have their insurance certificate, which I think they're delivering to our office tomorrow, and that would be more of a community-based type of security system, it's not retired police officers, it has much more to do with empowering residents as part of security as well as policing. And so those are the two things that you will see an immediate response to, and I would say, I would give them at least six days, Councilman, to see if we do have the luck that we think they will bring. Different, completely different approach.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Wow, there's so many issues, but communication is definitely a concern that I had, and it was, Mr. President, if you recall, when you and I met with Mayor Borwitz, because the concern of the residents, one of the issues that we touched on. I think, I'm disappointed, to be honest with you, that some of the residents are not here, because I think you're right, I think, first of all, it takes an honest discussion of the issues, and it takes participation from the residents. Based on the testimony that we heard from many of the residents that attended previous meetings, it was obvious to us that some of them would basically say, you know, I don't live there, but I'm always there, well, my question would be, what are you doing here then? You don't reside here, why are you always here? But, and I'm glad that we clarified the issue by the recreation room, because that was a major concern that I personally had. But I guess my question to you is, because we have endured meeting after meeting with a lot of criticism, primarily the president, and would it be fair to say, would it be fair to say that, and you have made a wonderful presentation, and I'm happy that there's hope, you know, for a while there, some of those were somewhat pessimistic, because I know, we knew that money was a major issue because of what Christie did, so I'm glad that there's hope. But would it be fair to say that some of the things you have said here tonight, you would have not been able to say a month and a half ago, and that's why we didn't meet before?
That's right.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, because I knew, I knew, Councilman Grover, I met with you, I knew that all the people have reached out to you, but it's a council, it's a hallway, like I was lacking a lot of information, but I, so if you say to me that some of this information you didn't have, then I completely understand that.
Right, I mean, to be very honest with you, we only have really HUD approval for the process, less than thirty days, and we're still negotiating the final approval. And I can't close on the money, because I'm still negotiating the final details with the investor who buys the credits, and so, you know, I think I learned that even if it all isn't tied up in the bow, it's important to let, you know, where I am in the process. So in the future, as I'm moving down the path, I'll at least tell you at least what I'm trying to accomplish. I think the pressure I put on myself is that you probably didn't want to hear from me unless I had a solution, and that prevented me.
Sure. Thank you.
I thank you for coming and doing the presentation, one thing that I feel though should be addressed as soon as possible, and I don't know what the plan is, is just the lighting.
The lighting.
And the pathways and the parking lot, it's just, we all know, light makes a big difference. I mean, when it's lit up, just everyone feels safer, they'll be more prone also to park in the back, I know they're afraid to park in the back, so I'm not sure what's the game plan.
The game plan is to replace the parking, and we did get approval, as I was explaining, to replace it with a different light, because as you know, we have had light there, but we lose it quickly, and so we kept replacing it with the same thing, and I said, well, this is crazy, because we're bleeding from a cash flow standpoint, and we're not solving the problem. So we were able to get a light which should withstand, you know, the vandalism that we've had, and therefore, spend a little bit more money, the HMFA was only allowing us to spend this amount, but we made a, we replaced them so many times, I said, if you allow me to go to the next level, that has some of the protecting measures on it, it's actually gonna be cheaper in the long run. So they have approved that, those lights are now on order, we just, we have to have three bids, we went out for the bids for the electrician, so I would say, in the next couple of weeks, you should see that work starting to happen. But it's much more, I think, important to change them out, so with states.
And along with getting the security in place, along with the lighting, I think that's gonna be a big, big factor.
The other good thing from the security measure is that, once the construction starts, it's almost like I have two budgets, I have the budget for Parker to do the security for the Parker Road buildings where people are, and then I have the security budget for the construction. So I actually have a little bit more than we've been able to have. And our attention to three buildings instead of six is a lot easier, right, than having it all over the place. So I'm hoping that the residents feel a lot more attention being given to them when we can get this construction going and not have to worry about residents being on the other side of the site.
Yeah, my concern for any unit, any rental unit in the city, is that it meets the codes and the requirements and so forth. If we could be assured that whatever residents are there are in habitable units by law and ordinance, that would go a long way to reassuring us that we will come and make substantial claims, that in fact, we can say, no, the units are up to code. Are the units up to code?
The units, it all, I'm gonna, I'm gonna punt, the units meet health and safety standards. Do they meet all your maintenance codes? I could stand here and say that they do. But the million dollars that kind of looks like it just went in the toilet was really to try to just maintain health and safety codes, so we are not violated. We are getting violations, we have to fix them as they occur, and we have been doing that. So we're trying to stay ahead of it, but I have to tell you, it can change in two days. You could walk with me and everything could be fixed, and two days later, a major system calls for repairs.
But it meets health and safety requirements, which means that if the City of Elizabeth inspector went to the units, finding it in compliance with health and safety requirements, they would not want to remove the tenants or shut the...
Right, that's correct.
Okay, I think that that provides a real strong basis, comfort level, that at least the health and safety needs of the residents are being met.
There are forty-seven compromised ceilings, I mean, it's not like I don't know, there's forty-seven compromised ceilings in the Parker Road buildings, they are all being budgeted to be replaced and shore up as much as possible. I will tell you, Councilman, I'll fix forty-seven, I'll have two like the next week, but we're trying to stay on top of it. In addition, there was about forty-six units that have been completely renovated, new kitchen, new bath, new flooring, so as we've had really disaster apartments that couldn't be occupied, we've above, you know, anything else that's there. So... So I hear you, we can't really have people inhabiting things that are not habitable.
Thank you.
Just to draw my, I hate to tease you, but just a friendly, friendly to her.
Councilman, Councilman, you wait, Councilman.
I just want to talk about.
Let Councilman Mazen speak.
You heard us talk about you. Let her speak, let Councilman Mazen speak. With the, with the, with the exterminator?
Ms. Folio, I really appreciate that you came in and actually as a city council and of course, some of the council were there because they were called by the people to actually visualize all the cry and the complaint that came before the city council, which, you know, they expect us to do something. And the city council president did a good job by allowing them to speak. Many views were directed towards the president of the city council. Some of us didn't say a word because we were waiting for his permission to either speak or to present whatever situation that we find ourselves in. I do remember that many years ago, when your company came over before city council and we voted upon millions and millions of dollars and unfortunately, the Democratic governor lost, the Republican won the election. He cut the funding because of the budget that he wanted to balance the budget, whatever he wanted to do in the state of New Jersey. My question to you again, I know you did try. Can you reapply again, it might be not directly to the governor of New Jersey, it might be to President Obama, to our federal government, to get some funding from the federal government, come in directly to help you out considering the situation that you are in? Your intention was well good to come in and invest and try to do something good for people in Elizabeth, but unfortunately, you know, without music, there's no dance, okay? So maybe if you want to dance it again, can you go to the federal government and have, might be with some help of some congressmen and come up with some kind of an emergency money or promissory notice to your company or corporation so that our people in Elizabeth will be getting the right treatment, you know, for living in a comfortable luxury place like this building used to be many, many years ago. So I was stalled, I wasn't there many years ago. And I see what you did in a waterfront, in a waterfront which was a great job. I mean, we got rid of the cancer and you developed some nice building. Of course, you're still gonna have some people who are still not really so great. You cannot don't throw everybody out of that particular area. So did you really try hard or might be find other way, means of, you know, your investment? I know you had city council support. I know one time I heard that the entire police force was in your territory there in charge to prevent things to happen confrontation between your workers and the people that we actually represent. You paying for the police? I think at one time the county police also reported to your government.
We were paying for police and in conversations with the director, we decided to use those funds for this, to augment the police with the private security. And that was in discussions with the director. To your first point, however, there was a program called Choice Neighborhoods and there was an application available from the Obama administration.
Okay.
We applied. We were denied because our crime statistics were not high enough. But the problem is that we were competing with communities like LA and Atlanta. And so we went to Senator Menendez and we said, "It's impossible for us to compete against a Los Angeles. So maybe there needs to be a small cities choice program where we just compete with cities that have, you know, 125,000 population." And so we wrote a position paper for Menendez and hopefully after this election cycle, we may see that. But we have, you know, we have looked at anything we could possibly apply for. We have been constantly trying to do just what we're saying and we'll continue.
Thank you.
Thanks. I just have one question with Councilman. Ms. Folio, on the elevators, we talked about the fobs, the third, fourth, fifth floor. If I recall, there was, was there just one elevator per building?
There was one elevator per building.
Because my question is, because the elevators kind of run up the center of the building to make it even more secure, I guess, maybe have fobs that would open the elevator door to the right side of the building and a different door opening to the left?
It's a good thing, we should look at that.
Because there are elevators that have open doors. And if you're gonna do a brand new one, that might be the way to go.
It's a very good idea.
Because now you'll either cut it into less people going to different parts of the building.
That's a good, good thought, if we can do that. And the elevators will be larger than what?
The one in the empty seat.
Yeah. I wish I could afford the one in your room.
Any other comments or questions?
Want to thank you.
Thank you very much.
Want to thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Really want to thank you for coming out this evening and, you know, giving us some information. We recognized all the problems that you did inherit when you brought, you know, Oakwood Plaza and the funding and the finances that you wanted to build and what you wanted to do from the beginning and it did not happen. So we understand all of that. And I'm glad to see the communication and I'm hoping that because you've met with some of the tenants is why they're not here this evening, you know, that now there's that communication and I really hope that you continue that communication with these residents, like you said, with the monthly newsletter or a meeting with them and with the buildings every couple of months or whatever the case may be. Because ultimately, they're the ones that are living through this day by day.
And I know my job is to try to address it so it doesn't have to be you.
So, because yeah, like the Councilman indicated, when they come here, then we need to,
I understand.
You know, try to do something to help our residents out, so I appreciate it.